We'll go ahead and start this meeting of Tuesday, March 25th, 2014, of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. We will start today with a flag salute led by Supervisor Wygant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Now we'll move on to our statement of meeting procedures, read by our clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you very much, Ann. We're now going to enter the time of public comment. This is the time in our meeting at which the public can ask questions, make comments on anything that's not on the agenda. So if there anyone here today that would like to come up and make a statement, going once, going twice, three times? Okay. Great. We will now move on to supervisors committee reports. Do we have anything to report, starting with Supervisor Wygant?
I did have one thing. It's not technically a committee report, but I had the opportunity on Sunday to represent the county at the unveiling of the new plaque for the California State Historic Designation of the Mountain Quarry Railroad Bridge, also known as No Hands Bridge. It also coincidentally happened to be the 102nd actual birthdate of the bridge, so we sang a round of "Happy Birthday" off tune to the bridge. But it is, it is California State Historic Monument Designation Number 1,051. And I am sad to report that the boulder and the plaque is actually on the El Dorado side of the bridge itself, but it was spearheaded by the Placer County Historical Society, and they did just a fantastic, fantastic job. So hats off to everyone who was involved in that.
Excellent. Great. And, any, none? Okay. Great. Then we will move, now move on to our consent agenda. Is there any, I'm gonna ask the board first, is there anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. And I'll ask the public if there is anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. I'll entertain a motion in a second. Great. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, vote.
Holmes?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Excellent. Looks like we still have some time before we have our first timed item. So we will go ahead and move to our first department item. Item number four, Health and Human Services, Adult and Children's System of Care, Contract Amendments, Substance Use Treatment for Fiscal Year 2013-14.
Thank you very much. Maureen Baumann with the Adult System of Care. So, Mr. Chairman and members of this board, this morning I have a request for you to take several actions. One is to authorize the assignment of contract number CN013169 from Aegis Medical Systems, which is the California Corporation to Aegis Treatment Centers, effective January 11th, 2014. And then another request, this is our mid-year contract adjustments for the substance abuse contracts, to approve amendments for a total increase of $347,600, of which $73,800 would be net county general funds, to amend the following substance abuse treatment programs, and also to authorize our Health and Human Services Director to sign any resulting, future resulting amendments and subsequent amendments to these contracts. The contracts are with Recovery Now, mostly related to increases in child welfare usage, New Leaf Counseling Services, PES/EBS for our 109 program, and the Aegis Treatment Centers, which is the methadone treatment program. So quickly with some background, substance abuse is a critical program to Placer County residents. We know that these programs result in very positive outcomes for our residents, including child reunification, decreased recidivism, public safety, decreased healthcare costs, and reduced homelessness. I can briefly tell you what the Recovery Now is, a sober living environment that is used for a lot of people in child welfare to help with their transition back into the community as part of their treatment program. New Leaf Counseling Programs is the one treatment program we have that treats women and their children. And PES/EBS is one of our new evidence-based programs, in custody and out of custody, teaching moral recognition therapy to people that are in our AB109 or identified by probation. The one Aegis program that you authorized in terms of the change was a change of ownership of that company. Everything else is gonna stay the same, and so for contractual purposes, we just authorized the new, almost the same but slightly different name for that company. All in all, these contracts are all budgeted within our current budget. They are for this year's mid-year amendments based on usage of the programs. And again, I identified the net county cost, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we recommend approval of these actions.
Any questions of the board? Or comments? Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Aegis Treatment Centers, are they in Placer County, or are they?
Roseville.
In Roseville. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Euler.
The staff report identifies the higher anticipated rate of utilization of Recovery Now, and we're identifying funds for Recovery Now from Child Welfare Services. Are the Recovery Now services targeted at people below 18, or are the child welfare services dollars used because you're dealing with families and people in recovery who have kids?
So, Child Welfare Services does discover that a vast, a large number of the people that they're treating, where we're working with the children and the safety of the children, is due to substance abuse of the parents. So this is actually the treatment program for the parents of those children that were involved.
Because when you're identifying the substance abuse issue and tying it with the child welfare, I was wondering, are you talking about the substance abuse of children, or is it of parents?
Parents.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions of the board? Any further questions from the public on this item? Great. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. Let's move to item B, 4B, Environmental Health Amendment to Placer County Code 2.16100, Fees and Fee Schedule. Mr. Nix?
Environmental health programs, as you're all well aware, provide essential services to the community to protect public health and maintain a safe human environment. The department collects fees for health permits that are issued every year to food facilities and other facilities, the standard annual health permits. Traditionally, a Consumer Price Index adjustment has been applied each year for those fees, as well as many other county departments apply a CPI, to help keep costs current with inflation. The two actions that I'm requesting today, one is to adopt an ordinance, amending the code to apply a CPI adjustment that is a prior year adjustment rather than a base year 2008 comparison. I think this approach more accurately reflects cost increases that occurred to the department. That approach has been reviewed by County Council and by HHS Fiscal and approved. And the second action required is, in this item, is to simply to adopt the fee schedule for environmental health this year, the same as last year's, with a couple of minor adjustments for clarification and better defined fee categories for a few facilities for a more accurate and fair fee amount. So it's fairly simple actions, but there are two actions I'm requesting this morning.
Okay. Any questions of the board? I do have a question, Wes. What was the methodology used, and be brief on this, in order to come to the CPI? Was there a comparison made to what other counties do, what other jurisdictions do? How did we get to the fee structure?
Mr. Chairman, there was some comparison and some analysis done to that. The Placer County Code, the way it's written now, compared it to a 2008 base year, which was the last year a comprehensive fee study was done in that department in order to tie it to that last comprehensive study. By doing that, it seems to be a little bit out of range now, a little high. So we decided that most other counties, and a more typical approach is to apply it just to the last prior 12 months, looking for one year's CPI change rather than back to the base year. We do recommend in the next couple of years, doing another comprehensive fee study to make sure that we are still current across the board within the next two years or so.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from the public on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Oh, Supervisor Euler.
So just to be clear, had you utilized the base year 2008, today you'd be before us requesting an across-the-board fee increase of 7.5%. But given that we're looking at a base year just from the last calendar year, last fiscal year, I'm sorry, you're only suggesting our board make an adjustment of 1.6% in the fees?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, very nice, very nice. I'll go ahead and bring that back to the board for movement, or approval. All right. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any abstentions and any no votes? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like we are, we'll move on to item number five, Public Works, Lake Forest Water Quality Improvement Project Panorama Construction Contract Number 1101.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Peter Kratz here with Public Works on this item. This item relates to awarding the construction contract for the Lake Forest Water Quality Improvement Project located in North Lake Tahoe. Specifically, the project's located about two miles east of Tahoe City in an existing commercially, commercial residentially developed area. This project consists of improving stormwater quality in the Lake Forest area, namely through stream restoration efforts, culvert replacements, and road improvements. It represents the third and final phase of a long-term effort focused on restoring one of the larger open space meadow areas in North Lake Tahoe. It culminates a 10-year-plus effort by the county that corrects some significant man-made mistakes from the past when development occurred in more of an unchecked way. Some highlights of this multi-phase project from the past, including taking a creek, known as Lake Forest Creek, that was piped under a condominium development that was built in the 60s, cutting that pipe off, resurfacing the creek, and then re-emerging that water that went under the development onto the meadow that was dried up. So essentially, the meadow wasn't functioning for 30-plus years, and that was probably the biggest highlight of our project in the past. This next phase actually opens up another meadow that's been channelized down by the lake and provides a better treatment there. I would say the biggest statement of this project is that it will improve the quality of urban stormwater in one of the most effective and efficient ways where runoff is ultimately polished or cleaned naturally in a meadow before being discharged into Lake Tahoe. We rarely have this opportunity where most of our development along the lakeshore fills up most open spaces, and this happens to be a big open space that we improved dramatically over the last 10 years. So this, it's a culmination of a big effort for Public Works and for the county that should be very proud of that. On the construction side of this project, it was competitively bid through the county's Procurement Services Division, where nine bids were received, and West Coast Contractors of Nevada Inc. was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of just over $3.3 million. Environmentally, the project was permitted through a CEQA mitigated negative declaration approved by your board on February 24th, back in 2009, and by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency permitting and construction requirements at a later date. Should the actions before you be approved today, construction should start next month and be completed later this year. Funding of the project is supported by grants or fees from the United States Forest Service, State of California, and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. With this background information, we ask your board to approve of the three actions before you, as stated in the board memo package. In summary, they include: Adopt a resolution, awarding the construction contract to West Coast Contractors of Nevada Inc. in the amount of $3,336,426, with no net county cost. Number two, authorize the chair to execute the construction contract. And number three, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders as determined necessary, up to a maximum amount of $336,000, or 10% of the base bid amount. With that, happy to address any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kratz. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Peter, thank you. It's delightful to see the next step in this project come back. The board may recall visiting the site that was remediated, and probably one of the more exciting things about that, Jack, I'm not sure you were on the board at the time, was immediately, we actually had fish come back into the stream and start spawning that had not been there in, as Peter says, probably 30 years, if not longer. And so, very often, these environmental remediation projects that we do, we don't see immediate results and immediate returns, and this was something that was just so, it was digital. It was a zero, and then it was a one. It was really pretty exciting. I did want to touch on, there were nine bids that came in on this, and West Coast Contractors of Nevada was the lowest. None of the nine bidders, as I recall, are actually based in Placer County. Is that correct?
Correct. That's right.
Just wanted to make sure, because you know I always ask that question.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public on this item? Great. Then I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Move approval of the item.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now we will move to our first timed item, a commemorative coin, and this is Supervisor Wygant.
So, Mark, will you please come up to the podium and, just so you're aware, you'll get a shot at me when I'm done up here, if you so choose.
Which many of us would like the opportunity to have.
But, but, Jack, don't let Kirk have a shot at you.
You back your time, and we'll take it.
Maybe I should just leave now, I'm not sure. So my commemorative coin this year goes to Mark Fowler, who was not able to make it in December, so I appreciate the board's indulgence. But this is a real pleasure for me. Mark and I grew up together. For the record, Mark's a year older. I know it doesn't look like it, but it's true. Probably about a mile apart from each other in rural Lincoln back in an era that doesn't exist anymore, when we used to trespass to go fishing on Coon Creek on what is now Hidden Falls Park, but nobody cared back then. Lincoln used to have a Levi Day where kids could ride their horses to school, and their horses were kept there all day long. We had a barn dance in the gym where we actually brought in a couple hundred bales of hay for seeding purposes, I'm sure in tremendous violation of fire codes in this era. We belonged to 4H and FFA, and even in elementary school, we were in band together. Mark played the French horn and I played the clarinet, just so if you never noticed that sensitive side of me, I wanted to share that with my colleagues. So after high school, Mark went to Sac State, biology major, and upon graduation was immediately hired back at Lincoln High School to teach their biological sciences, natural sciences. But he didn't really stop with that. Somehow, he conned the board into allowing him to put together an outdoor education program as a result of his interest in biology, but also his passion for the outdoors and knowing the educational impact that that would have positively on the kids. And he was able to take high school kids in amazing places in the Sierra, North Coast of California, the Lost Coast, week-long backpacking trips, but out of state, places like Arizona and Utah as well. And I've had, I still come across kids who went to Lincoln High School and had Marcus teach her, every time he graduated from Lincoln High School, did you, Mark? Oh, yeah, I took this outdoors class. It was incredibly influential and had a positive impact on my life, just being able to take those courses and see that perspective that they wouldn't have had otherwise. Lincoln High School has a grand farm program, which is unusual in the state of California, an actual operating farm, and Mark was a key person in developing that. Taught natural sciences, they did things like raise trout, trout growth monitoring, wood duck studies, wood duck boxes, bird censuses, lots, lots of things that connect to that kind of an activity. Mark, in high school, played baseball and football, and when he came back to Lincoln High School, he helped coach. And one of the great stories about Mark that I love is that he and I ran into each other years after we graduated, and he was coaching. Mark was running back and played in the secondary, one of the more glamorous positions, or two of the more glamorous positions, as compared to offensive line. But I said, so what are you, you coaching running backs, or are you coaching the secondary? And he said, no, I'm coaching the offensive line. I said, well, you know, why, why are you doing, you don't know anything about it, one. And two, why are you doing this? But he seriously told me, and this is classic Mark, the coaches really want to coach the star positions. Nobody really wants to work for the offensive lineman, and they didn't get the attention that they needed. So I studied up on that, and that's my focus, and that's the kind of person that Mark is. For these kinds of things, and particularly his innovation, Mark was the Placer County 1996 Teacher of the Year, countywide position recognition. In 2007, he was acknowledged by California Waterfowl Association as the Teacher of the Year, 2007. He was admitted to the Lincoln High School Hall of Fame in 2007. He retired from teaching a few years ago, and the reason why this commemorative coin is coming forward is Mark was also an original member of the Lincoln MAC, so for about 18 years, you've served on the MAC, but he retired from that this last year, unfortunately, which your tastes me still. But he's busy. In his retirement, he and Patty love to travel, and they go to exciting places like Costa Rica, where he can hike and take off into the backwoods there. But he's a member of our Placer County Fish and Game Commission, a member of the Western Placer Education Foundation, my favorite, he's a member of the Placer County Conservation Plan Biological Working Group, he's a member of the Lincoln High School Farm Foundation, and he's also a member of the Wildlife Heritage Foundation. So in retirement, obviously, he's not just sitting around. He enjoys hiking all over the Sierra and probably other amazing places, oftentimes with his wife Patty, but they enjoy working in their organic garden and fabulous orchard on his property, which is property that's been in his family for a long time. And Mark and Patty, his high school sweetheart, have been married now for, it's gotta be about 40 years. Patty knows, I'm sure. So with that, Mark, it is a great privilege and a pleasure to give you my commemorative coin. For the chairman.
Be nice.
You didn't mention about our boxing match.
I have pictures, I think.
Well, first of all, thank you for the honor of this medallion. Having a teaching career and volunteering, you know, I don't expect, you don't do that expecting accolades. You know, you do it because you like it. I have ex-students, parents of ex-students, friends, family here, so to me, it was a great career. Couldn't ask for a better position to live in Placer County all my life. What a place to live. Great place, well-run, well-organized, you know, great place to be, so. Special, thank you very much, Robert, as a friend and a person that we grew up together. To be honored like this, I'm very humbled by it. And like you mentioned, you know, we still, just because you retire, you know, you're not done, you can still continue to live, so, you know, luckily, I have a group of friends here that I hike with every week. We get out and wander in the forest hill, you know, North Fork area, wherever, so there's a lot still to do, and again, thank you for the honor, and I'm privileged to have accepted this, so thank you very much.
And now we'll move on to our 9:20 timed item. This is a, another commendation, and I will turn it over to Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. Bruce Cosgrove, would you please come forward? We're here this morning to present this commendation to Bruce, and before I get to the actual commendation, I just wanted to be a little bit extemporaneous and just say that I've really enjoyed the couple of years that Bruce and I have had the opportunity to work together. What Bruce's commendation really doesn't get to is how wry and droll and funny and smart he is, and how passionate he is about his service to the greater community of Auburn. And I think he's just done an incredible job managing and negotiating the sometimes Byzantine and labyrinthine links between business and politics. And I really just wanted to take the opportunity to say how much I respect how incredibly well you have handled the position and yourself, and what a fantastic job I think you've done in representing the chamber and the businesses in the greater Auburn area. So having said what I feel from my heart, I will now bring the commendation forward. And just also a quick note on the commendation. When we first asked a number of people to give us some information about Bruce's 30-year history, because I, of course, was an infant when Bruce started, we got so much that it would have ended up being a three-page commendation, and we don't actually do three-page commendations, so please excuse the brevity of it, but it was very difficult to condense 30 years of incredible service into a one-page document, but we tried. So, here you go. This is a commendation on March 25th, 2014, honoring Bruce Cosgrove for 30 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Auburn and Placer County. Whereas Bruce Cosgrove was born in Corning, New York, and moved to the city of Auburn in 1973, and whereas for the last 30 years, Bruce has served a vital leadership role as CEO of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, bringing business leaders together, and has strived to build a strong Auburn chamber that makes a positive difference, and whereas Bruce has helped develop community support for the establishment of a symphony orchestra. With a can-do attitude, Bruce worked to bring diverse music interests and business leaders together, and in May 1987, the community of Auburn experienced the birth of an orchestra, the Auburn Symphony. And whereas, the city of Auburn reached out to Bruce and to the chamber to form a committee to identify a viable program to help revitalize downtown Auburn. Bruce served as organizing chairman of this committee, brought community leaders together representing downtown and old-town businesses, the city, and the chamber, which resulted in the formation of the Auburn Main Street Program. And whereas in 1987, Bruce led the effort for the Placer County Visitor Center relocation proposal to move from Newcastle to Auburn. He built a coalition and worked in conjunction with all the chambers throughout Placer County. Bruce and the assembled countywide team of chamber CEOs established and originally managed the Placer County Visitor Center, now located in downtown Auburn. And whereas in 1988, Bruce, along with then-police chief Nick Willock and businessman Ralph Swan, were instrumental in the acquisition of the Railroad Depot building designated for demolition by the railroad. The Chamber of Commerce moved into the building in 1989. Bruce also negotiated the purchase and relocation of the Chinese Railway Worker statue, a tribute to the Chinese commitment to the building of the transcontinental railroad. And whereas in 1991, two business owners, Sherry Gilbert and Sue Kusel, proposed the establishment of the Black and White Ball, an upscale community event to promote the city of Auburn, build community spirit and pride, and to serve as an annual fundraiser for the chamber. Bruce wholeheartedly promoted the concept to the chamber board, and in 1992, the first Black and White Ball was held in downtown Auburn. And whereas in 1998, Bruce established the formation of a leadership development program for the community. Bruce believes that leadership is a priceless resource for any community. Leadership Auburn saw its first graduates in 1999. Today, Leadership Auburn is in its 15th year and will soon surpass 300 graduating members. And whereas Bruce's invaluable accomplishments are far more than can be expressed, at least on this single page, now therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors on behalf of the citizens of Placer County hereby take great pride in recognizing Bruce Cosgrove for his 30 years of dedicated service to the Auburn Chamber of Commerce and the citizens of Placer County. Bruce, you deserve that. Bruce, you deserve this.
Now you get to go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. 30 years has been really a short time for me. I've come to work every day excited about the opportunities that, doing the kind of work I've done with the chamber and what you folks do with the Board of Supervisors for the county, you never know who's going to come up here and say what, and how that's going to change your day. A phone call can change the day. Someone walking into the office can change the week or the year. I've learned over time that it takes just one person to make something happen. And I've had many hundreds, probably thousands, of one persons who've come into the office. And as a result of their desire to do something good for the community, good stuff happens. 30 years ago, when I came to work for the chamber, the Auburn Dam was the big thing on the horizon. It had been stopped because of an earthquake, but it was something that this community and Placer County saw as something that was going to put Auburn and Placer County on the map. We were going to have all types of tourism and people coming to tour the dam and enjoy the recreation and the jobs and the homes that were going to be built truly invigorated our business community and this county. It's interesting that over time, all those things that then were important to us still remain important today. Today, we see the American River Canyon as a great asset for recreation. Our community and all of Placer County is on Interstate 80, and it's just a roadway to somewhere else. And so as a business community, we have been trying really hard to put ourselves on the map. Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, Forest Hill, Colfax, all of us are on the road to somewhere else. And we wanted our communities to thrive for what they have to offer. And that's what we've strived to do. So I'm excited about the future. I've been a part of the past. I've been a part of the past 30 years. It's been great. And it's really rewarding to sit back now, I'm not going to sit back, by the way, and just revel in the future of what this county and this community has before it. We're looking at, we designated ourselves, as you know, Auburn. We boldly said we were the endurance capital of the world a few years ago because of the two major world-class events, the Tevis Cup and the Western States 100 that take place. People all over the world know about those events, and they know about this community and Auburn. But we don't necessarily all know about ourselves. So by proclaiming ourselves the endurance capital of the world, it has set the stage for us to market ourselves now as Adventure Auburn. We want to do some things in the American River Canyon. We recently did something in partnership with the county to actually have base jumping off the Forest Hill Bridge. We have a little duck derby in the river and a lot of other activities that are good for business, good for community, help build community pride, build a sense of community, make us all proud to be a part of Placer County and to be a part of our communities. And in Auburn, we're very proud to be a part of this community. So I want to thank you for this acknowledgement and recognition. I appreciate it very much. And I look forward to seeing you at this podium when I can talk for Bruce Cosgrove instead of being a... I'll tell you what I really think. Thank you all.
Bruce, Bruce, before you go, I just had a few comments. You and I go way back, even before you were chamber CEO.
Thanks, Dad.
No, we worked on the Fourth of July several times. I don't know how many board members you've had over the last 30 years. I don't know how many city council people that you dealt with over the last 30 years and supervisors and city managers for that. But you have always been, the last 30 years, you have been the steady piece throughout our community. And I just want to recognize you for that and thank you for your friendship. And I wish you well, and I know I'll be seeing you further on down the road. So congratulations. Thank you for all you've done for Auburn and the community.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
We're going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Placer County Public Housing Authority.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis, today from your housing authority. With me is Nancy Rhea, your housing supervisor over our Housing Choice voucher program. We are here today asking your approval of our annual plan and our admin plan so that we can submit it to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to secure over $2.1 million in federal funding to use for housing assistance for our community. With that funding on an annual basis, Nancy has been able to provide support and assistance to over 265 seniors, persons with disabilities and families, and another 35 veterans. There are three changes to our report, our annual plans this year, our annual and admin plans. The first one is, we get to recognize for the fourth year in a row that we've been designated a high-performing housing authority. And Nancy assures me we are never going back to just standard ever again. The second one is a little convoluted. It's just more cleanup that HUD has been doing to their administrative rules, and it's about the interest rate. In the past, if someone had assets over $5,000, they would assign an interest rate for us to apply to that amount of money so we could determine what would be countable income towards their subsidy. HUD is now saying that we can use our average for our area and cannot exceed it by 0.75% of one percentage point. So they're giving us flexibility to recognize our regional interest rates as opposed to them setting one from the national level. And the third one is just a little bit of an administrative break for Nancy and her staff, Kim Cray. There are income and supports that are excluded from calculations when we determine how much subsidy an individual or a family can get. But they still made us verify that that family was receiving them. An example is food stamps. So we'd have to get the family to sign a release, and then we'd have to go get the information. Fortunately, it's within Human Services, so she just had to walk down the hall. But for other housing authorities, it's across jurisdictions. They are saying if it's an income level that's already excluded or an income source that's excluded, we don't have to determine it. So the plan has been out for the required 45 days. We have noticed it in the local media. It has been placed at our local libraries. It's at our Human Services Office and on the Housing Authority website. We have received no public comments to date. I also neglected to say we have shared it with our legal services in Northern California. So today, we are before you to ask you to conduct a public hearing to see if there are public comments for the two plans, close the public hearing where you're recommending you adopt both the annual plan and the administrative plan, and adopt the resolution accepting those for submission to HUD. There is a mistake in your agenda packet on the resolution. I used the template that said Board of Supervisors when you actually are the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority. I forwarded it to Ann, and here are some hard copies. So that would be the change to the packet before you.
Great. Then we will go ahead and conduct the public hearing as requested. Any comments on either the annual plan or the administrative plan from the public? Once, going twice, going three times? We'll go ahead and close that and bring that back to the board.
I was waiting for comments.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Okay, the motion carries. And now we will adjourn as the Placer County Public Housing Authority and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. And we are on to item number six, Treasurer-Tax Collector, Empower Grand LeBachan Project.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Kimberly Holly, Chief Deputy Treasurer here on behalf of Empower Placer. Your board is being asked to approve an Empower application for the Grand LeBachan Conference Center to finance energy efficiency retrofitting. For some time, Empower Placer, in conjunction with Sierra Business Council, has been working with Grand LeBachan, helping to facilitate a large energy efficiency retrofit project for their conference center. The retrofits have been detailed in Exhibit B of the board report. Major portions of the project include efficiency upgrades to the conference center's heat and power systems, air conditioner system, as well as efficiency upgrades to the commercial kitchen. The Grand LeBachan Conference Center was built in the mid-1980s and has had minimal upgrading related to energy efficiency. This efficiency improvement project is expected to produce an average annual savings of $21,840, which is net of the annual debt service for the Empower assessment. The cumulative 20-year savings is estimated to be over $2 million. This application meets all program requirements for Empower. The Empower program report and administrative guidelines require that all projects in excess of $500,000 be approved by your board. Based on the steering committee's review and recommendation, and after further review by the treasurer-tax collector, your board is asked to approve this application for energy efficiency retrofit financing for Grand LeBachan Conference Center in an amount not to exceed $718,184. And questions?
All right, yeah. Any questions of the board? Any questions of the public? And I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Great, we'll move on to 6B, Authorization to Participate in State PACE Loss Reserve Program. Janine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasurer-Tax Collector. I'm here today to ask you to adopt a resolution authorizing Empower Placer's participation in the California Alternative Energy and Advanced Transportation Finance Authority's Property-Assessed Clean Energy Loss Reserve Program, which I will call the Transportation Agency CAEFA. That's how it's commonly called. The governor and the legislature worked together last summer and through a trailer bill signed by the governor, established a $10 million fund in order to protect mortgage holders based on concerns voiced by FHFA. As you're aware, FHFA has hindered efforts for PACE programs to move forward. And in a demonstration of commitment to PACE and also to alleviate those concerns, this fund was established. It's administered by CAEFA and staffed by, through the state treasurer's office. And this fund would compensate mortgage holders if they, in fact, incurred a loss specifically related to a PACE program. So as an example, if they foreclosed on a property and while they owned the property, had to pay the property taxes or had to pay the property taxes in anticipation of a foreclosure or other non-payment by the property owner, the portion, only the amount on the property tax bill that represents the amount of the PACE assessment could be claimable by the mortgage lender. And so the CAEFA has gone through the process of adopting emergency regulations and will be moving towards permanent regulations. And based on that, they have come up with a fee of 0.25% of the amount of the assessment in order to pay for the administration of this program. So just to give you an idea, a $10,000 original assessment, it's a one-time fee, would pay $25. A $50,000 assessment would pay $125. And in participating with, in the program, we would collect this fee in order to forward on to CAEFA, to defray administrative expenses. In their regulations, they indicate that after two years, they will look at the amount that they have collected in relation to their administrative expenses and recognizing that as volume goes up in the amount of assessments that are authorized every year, that that fee could come down. So that, and that's, I would fairly say that's what's anticipated. So it is a one-time fee, and it protects that mortgage holder on that specific assessment for the life of the loan. They also are grandfathering in all existing assessments. So everything that we have already financed will be grandfathered in without a fee. If I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to do that.
Any questions of the board? Comments? Okay. Any questions of the public? So just to get this straight, what we have here is kind of an insurance policy on the PACE mortgagers?
Yes, yes. To protect specifically the mortgage holder, the terminology they're using here is a reserve fund. That's usually meant to protect a bondholder. That was three years ago. They attempted to do something similar, and that's what that was for. At some point, we may need to either incur costs or charge a fee to establish a reserve fund. But at this point, our financing hasn't called for it. So I just want to differentiate that terminology and to make sure that everybody understands this is to protect the mortgage holder, not a bondholder.
Okay, great. Well, then I'll bring that back to the board for action.
Mr. President?
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We'll now move to our final item. It's a county executive item, 7A Budget Update. Mr. Andy Heath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Andy Heath, Deputy CEO for Finance, Administration, and Budget. What I'd like to do for you today is give you an update on the fiscal activity for fiscal year 1314. It's the current fiscal year that we're in and most of the major operating funds of the county. And then give you an idea of where the CEO's office and the county in general is working towards, how we're working towards the development of the fiscal year 1415 budget going into next year. With that, I'll give you some information on the revenue and expenditure projections that we're estimating for fiscal year 1314. We'll also look at the general fund and the public safety fund and how those funds line up in the updated five-year model that we prepared, which is the multi-year strategic model. And then also go into the 1415 budget development process and give you some idea of what we're thinking along that line. When we're looking at the development of the budget for the coming year, and more importantly, for the current year activity for fiscal year 1314, staff always takes into consideration what the board has adopted in the past as part of the approval of the final budget and the proposed budget each year in the Budget and Financial Policy Guidelines. The Budget and Financial Policy Guides fiscal health of the organization, and there are several things that we're doing throughout the year and as we develop the budget for the coming year in consideration of the guidelines themselves. One of the things we do is continually look at economic analysis and long-term planning, where we actually on a monthly basis go through and look at all of the major operating funds in the county's budget and see where revenues and expenditures are going from month to month. We also have the two-year budget that we prepare, and we update that periodically, typically every couple of months, where we look at the activity in the general fund and the public safety fund for the current year, which are the two largest funds in the county, and also look at where we're going next year based on what we know in that two-year budget. And of course, we have our five-year strategic plan, where we look at the general fund and the public safety again, fund again, from a five-year perspective in long-term planning for those funds. We also look at promotion of cost transparency, where we're looking at periodic review of all costs that are built into the budgets and making sure that those costs do align to the departments and to the funds in which they belong. We look at the review and understanding of budget variances to make sure that we are budgeting conservatively. If there's a variance somewhere, we're really not making a whole lot of sense. We kind of analyze that and really go into finding out exactly what's causing that variance so that we maintain integrity in our budget. We also establish and maintain reserves. As you are aware, this year, the board did... As you are aware, this year, the, the Board did increase the reserves in the general and economic contingency reserves to the 5% policy threshold level, just over $20 million in the General Fund. And likewise, ironically, the addition of reserves in the Public Safety Fund also took that fund to just under 5%, about 4.9%. So we do have that reserve there as well. And then we encourage development of spending plans supported by sustainable resources, where we're looking at using ongoing revenues for ongoing expenditures and really trying to defray from using ongoing revenues for one-time expenditures, using one-time revenues for ongoing expenditures where, where that's just not sustainable moving forward. Got mixed up. Looking at the, at the operating budget of the county in total, we'll be focusing today on four major funds and one, one other fund as well as part of this discussion. The General Fund, the Public Safety Operations Fund make up the predominant, the largest share of the county budget. And then when you include the Public Ways and Facilities Fund, which is also the Road Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund, that represents about 95% of the operating budget in the county. So we'll be focusing primarily on those funds. And then we'll also be talking about the Library Fund a little bit as well. Looking at the General Fund, I'll just kind of work my way from, from left to right on this. You have a final budget in fiscal year 1314, the General Fund, that was balanced at about $387 million. And you can see that we did actually add in the $5.6 million into reserves for this year, taking those reserves, over $20 million, which represent a little bit more than 5% of the, of the General Fund total budget, which is the policy minimum target. When we look at the revised budget for 1314, and this is the budget for where it stands today, which would include any Board actions that have been taken up through the last Board meeting incorporated into the budget, where you have certain expenditures that are approved from a budgetary perspective that most always are offset by a revenue. Typically, you won't find too many expenditures that are approved mid-year or throughout the year after final budget that aren't supported by a revenue. But that's the difference where you see in if there's any revenues and/or expenditures here. And then we also have the carryover fund balance that we're estimating coming into this year. And then at the bottom, you see a negative number. That negative number actually represents carryover encumbrances for which there is a designated obligated fund balance that comes into the year as well. So that's really not a negative there. It's just offset by a portion of fund balance that carried over from the following year. So likely will all, all be spent because they're encumbrances that come over into the current year. By looking at the estimated actuals for, for this year, you'll see that we estimate about $386.6 million in revenue and $361 million in expenditures. And I'll go through what some of the differences are there. And we're estimating a carryover fund balance in the General Fund of about $25.1 million going into next year. What is all this made up of? The revenues are anticipated to be approximately $1.45 million more than budget moving into next year. We have greater than anticipated collections of property taxes, sales tax, real estate transfer taxes, and constructions permits as the economy modestly improves throughout this fiscal year. We also, and all of that information, those revenues are offset by lower collections of A-87 revenues pursuant to the state-approved plan that we recently received. So there's about $800,000 less in A-87 that will be coming into the General Fund. However, that is offset by greater collections of, than budgeted, property taxes, sales tax, and real estate transfer taxes to the extent of about $1.45 million. Expenditures are anticipated to be about $23.6 million less than budget. Most of this is made up of in the, in the salaries and benefit savings where we have vacant and funded positions making up about $17.7 million of that amount in the General Fund. This represents about 153 of the 1,405 authorized positions in the General Fund to be funded. There's about 153 of those vacant throughout the year up to this point, and that will generate, we're anticipating about $17.7 million in fund balance carryover. We also do not anticipate spending the $5.6 million, 1.5% General Fund contingency that we, that we have put in place. So that will also be carried over. And then we have another, other expenditure savings that's offset by an increase to the Public Safety Fund contribution, consistent with the five-year model that we have for the sustainability of the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, where we have about $3.4 million in, in expenditure savings in the General Fund itself, offset by about $3.1 million in additional revenue going to the Public Safety Fund, consistent with the true-up. Public Safety Fund will get 46.83% consistent with the model of the discretionary revenue in the General Fund. So when we true that up based on what we anticipate happening in fiscal year 1314, Public Safety Fund will get about $3.1 million more moving forward. All this amounts to about $25.1 million in fund balance carryover at the end of fiscal year 1314. Do have a caveat with this. This is only through month seven. So typically, fund balances can go up and down throughout the year, but this is our, our estimate as of month seven, and there's five more months of the fiscal year that they would need to get through. This $25 million that will be carried over in the General Fund, or is anticipated to be carried over in the General Fund into 1415, will represent a one-time revenue source that will be used to balance the budget for, for that year, for 1415. Moving over to the Public Safety Fund. Public Safety Fund at final budget for 1314, at $148.6 million revenues, offset by same amount of expenditures, at a balanced budget in that fund as well. And again, you see that at the beginning of this year, we did add $2.2 million into the Public Safety Fund reserve, taking their reserve to just over $7 million, which is about 4.9% of their budgeted expenditures. The revised budget, similar to the General Fund, does have a carryover encumbrance amount of $1.6 million. So it's anticipated that those carryover encumbrances will be spent and they are offset by an obligated fund balance, portion of fund balance that's coming in as well. When we look at the estimated actuals through month seven for fiscal year 1314, see we have about $151 million in revenue and $142 million in expenditures that are generating what we're anticipating to be about a $9.1 million carryover fund balance, which, similar to the General Fund, will be used for the fiscal year 1415 budget as part of that process. This is where the fund balance is coming from. So we have revenues that are anticipated to be about $3.76 million greater than budget. Those revenues are made up of additional Public Safety Sales Tax. This is Public Safety Sales Tax. It's likely to be received or estimated to be received that is more than what we had budgeted. And then we also have some Middle Fork Project MOA funds, which is the Memorandum of Agreement between Placer County and PCWA for expenditures related to Middle Fork operations on an ongoing basis. And those funds, that, that agreement was recently approved this fiscal year, I believe. And those funds are now coming in. So that's in there as well. And then we have, as I mentioned, as part of the General Fund increase in expenditures to other funds, the contribution coming into the Public Safety Fund, consistent with the true-up in the multi-year framework. And that's about $3.1 million. Expenditures are also anticipated to be, anticipated to be $5.3 million less than budget. And like the General Fund, there's about $2.9 million in vacant funded position savings that will accrue to that fund. And that represents approximately 54 positions out of 747. That's the $2.9 million. Then we have other expenditure savings as well, of about $2.4 million in the Public Safety Fund. Anticipated carryover fund balance of about $9.1 million coming into the Public Safety Fund at the end of this year to be used for next year's budget as we develop that budget. Again, this is as of month seven, so this is likely to change and fluctuate over time as the budget is a very fluid document. Looking at the Public Ways and Facilities Fund, otherwise known as the Road Fund, your Board adopted an $81.29 million budget for, for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 1314. We also had reserves at the beginning of this year that were not allocated to be used this year of about, just over $7 million. So those are set aside. Some of the major road projects that are completed or underway so far this year would be the Forest Hill Bridge Seismic Retrofinement Painting, which I believe is slated to be completed this year. We also have the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, a lot of activity going on with that. The Cook Riola Bridge Replacement. And then something that the Road Fund does a lot of, which is maintenance of roadway and maintenance of over 1,000 miles of roadway slated for this year as well. So those are some of the things in the Road Fund that we're working on. And the Road Fund gets the majority of its revenues from federal and state sources and any carryover balances from the previous year as well. Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund. Your Board adopted a $72.65 million Capital Projects Budget for the current fiscal year. That represents about just over 100 projects that are all detailed in, in the current budget. I also have reserves that carried over of about $2.64 million in the Capital Projects Fund. Some of the major capital projects that we're working on are regional sewer activities with SMD-1, SMD-3, and the Applegate Sewer. We also have the Sheridan Water Supply and Distribution Project, the Auburn Animal Shelter, and then the Placer County Government Center Planning and Projects and some of the things associated with that project area out there. Most of the projects that, that will not get started or will not be finished in this current fiscal year will likely carry over to next year, and you'll see that funding source come with it. So that's the way those are typically budgeted. With the Library Fund, just wanted to give the Board an update on where the Library Fund is as of today. Fiscal year 1314, we had a $6.5 million budget with assigned committed reserves carryover into this year of about $450,000. Not anticipated that we'll use this $450,000 for this year, but we did balance the budget coming into this year with $137,000 of reserves last year. Operational costs, as we're seeing, and we're paying very close attention to the Library Fund as we move forward, but operational cost increases are continuing to outpace the property tax growth. So we're hoping at some point in time that property tax growth will at least be equal to what we're seeing in terms of expenditure cost drivers for the Library Fund, particularly staff. And the estimated carryover fund balance into fiscal year 1415 from this year will be $224,000. So it's anticipated that the Library will have at its disposal to balance next year's budget or for next year's budget, the $450,000 and the $224,000 carryover. One other thing to mention in the Library is we, we did a comprehensive analysis of the A-87 charges that are charged to the Library. And that's important because the Library receives a contribution from the General Fund that is, all of the A-87 charges less about $100,000 in addition to payment for the, for the county librarian. In going through these A-87 charges, it was determined there, we found some savings of a couple hundred thousand dollars actually, that we're able to carry over into the coming year by looking at things and, and making some changes to the A-87 plan and aligning those costs. We're really going and looking at all of the costs of the county. So essentially, what that means is next year, we're anticipating that the General Fund contribution, at least from a static budget-to-budget approach, into next year will be less than what it is this year. Having said that, we're looking at a sustainable path for funding the Library in the future. And with that, looking at the whole strategic model that has been presented, strategic plan for the Library next year. What I'd like to do now is just pause. That's kind of the update of kind of where we're at for fiscal year 1314 and some of the major funds. And see if the Board has any questions with respect to current fiscal year activity.
Are there any questions at this point in time? Okay, all right. Let's move on.
All right. So in looking at the coming year's budget, fiscal year 1415, it's real important to get an idea of exactly where we're at and, and what the county will be confronting in, in the near future and in, you know, the long-term future, where we're looking at five years out. What this model does, and this is the five-year model that's been presented to the Board in the past, where it takes a multi-year approach and looks at what we anticipate to occur in the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund this year and five years out to determine whether or not we have a sustainable, sustainable plan. If you look at the far, the far left-hand column here, you see that the final budget is the final budget from 1314, where we added the $5.6 million into reserves and we do have a balanced budget. The next column represents the fiscal year 1314 year-end projection, and this is based on our two-year model, where we actually anticipate, consistent with what you just heard, about $25.1 million coming into, into carryover fund balance for the next fiscal year. And likewise, at the bottom of the, of the table, you'll see $9.1 million coming into the Public Safety Fund as well for carryover fund balance. The rest of the years, beginning in 1415 all the way out through 2018, 19, are modeled numbers. So what that means is that we have taken what we have done in prior-year models, absent putting the budget together for 1415, and just carried that information over and then updated the revenues and expenditures, consistent with the trends that we're seeing as of today. So for example, we have property tax revenue and it's assumed to be 2% throughout the model. Sales tax assumed to be 3% throughout the model. We have expenditure growth, where the predominant share of expenditure growth is, is in the Calpers costs, and we'll talk about those in a separate slide. And then moderate salary growth in the Public Safety Fund associated with major F. So all of this growth in expenditures and revenues is built in, and it's built in at a very conservative level so that we can get an idea, moving out, whether or not, at least from a conservative perspective, the county's General Fund and Public Safety Fund will be sustainable. If you can, up in 1415, you'll see that we have, we anticipate revenues to be 390 million in the General Fund and expenditures to be about $385 million. So we're anticipating that we will be able to have a balanced budget from a revenue and expenditure perspective coming into 1415. In 1516, however, in the General Fund, you'll see that we have 393.9 million, offset by 393.1 million in expenditures. So we're getting a little bit closer. What this means is that you have expenditure cost drivers that are outstripping the growth of the revenue. And you'll see that exaggerated even more in 1617, and then again in 1718 and 1819. The biggest component of this cost driver is again, Calpers. And I'll go through that in, in a couple of slides and kind of show you the impact and what that means. So how does, how does this model work? What this model does is it takes those balances and either takes reserves or carryover fund balance, takes absorption of costs in, in departments countywide, and then it also takes potentially the use of reserves in both the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund to balance everything out. So that's what you see going on here, where we have departmental absorbed costs that are required, consistent with the way the model's put together, where now we're driving a positive fund balance coming in. However, given the impacts of the Public Safety Fund and some of the cost drivers on the Public Safety Fund, these negative numbers need to be mitigated as well. And that further requires use of Public Safety Fund reserves. So you'll see that what's in reserves here is what they have in reserves today, the $7.1 million. And then on the second to box, second to last line, a carryover of reserves from the General Fund into the Public Safety Fund to offset the negative balance in the, in the Public Safety Fund. So this model is, is constantly moving. This model, from a totals perspective, hasn't changed too much from the prior-year model, which, given the assumptions, the recent assumptions that have been built in for the Calpers increases, is, is, is favorable. Because the Calpers assumptions that were recently approved by Calpers for the experience study were not in the previous model that this Board has seen. So to keep these numbers somewhat static, going from, from six months ago to today, is, is favorable.
Before you move off this slide, just real quick. I see you've called out retiree health and dental. Which line is it in? General Fund Salaries and Benefits where the Calpers estimated payments are?
Salaries and benefits for, for the Calpers.
General Funds. Retirement costs. Okay, so that is, and then I know that we have a slide coming up that gets, that shows us a trajectory of percentage of payroll or employer rates, but it doesn't tie, I don't think I saw any slides that actually show it in dollars. Do we have those numbers?
I have those numbers, yeah.
Okay, but you make sure at some point I get those.
Happy to share those with you. Essentially, what it means to the, to.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I'll get there, but I'll tell you now.
Okay.
The, by 2019, by 2019-20, the impacts of the Calpers rates, and I'll go through what those, what those components of the rates are, are anticipated to be $9 million for the General Fund by that year in aggregate and $8 million in the Public Safety Fund. So you can see that it's quite substantial.
Okay, and versus what today?
Versus, I'm sorry.
Nine million for the miscellaneous and eight million for safety?
Public Safety's nine million and eight million for safety. Public Safety is eight million, miscellaneous is nine.
Right, and you're anticipating that in 2020, right?
By 1920, yes. So by 2019-20.
Okay, so growing from what? Where are we today in terms of that, what our annual budget is?
What are the annual expenditures?
Yeah.
For Calpers?
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't have the breakdown of that specific number.
All right.
Well, if it's a 50% increase...
It's a 50% increase.
So it goes from 16 to 24 in the case of...
Okay, so if it's a 50% increase, then we're at about 6 million today for general and about 5 million, 5 and 1/2 million for Public Safety.
Yeah, that's about right.
50% increase, okay. Okay, thank you.
I can get you those exact...
Jack, if I could. Andy?
Yeah.
In the, can't see it up there, but the line cumulative debt absorbed by cost, do you have that broken down by departments, and does the model, is it such that the departments' budgets roll up into this grand total?
All of the expenditures do roll up, so these expenditures are, but for HHS, are aggregated as a whole in the fund, in the model. And what this does is it takes a given percentage of certain costs, and it actually requires departments to absorb that percentage of those costs, moving from year to year as those costs rise. So that's what that number is representative of.
So disparities or differences, more glaring issues, I guess, or concerns would be mirrored in that number by department?
Right.
Great. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you, Andy. Great presentation so far. I did want to follow up on Supervisor Yular's questions that he teased out of part of the budget moving forward. I think we're pretty clear that the cumulative retirement obligations moving forward are going to continue to be a challenge for us and all other jurisdictions. I know in the past, we as a board have talked about utilizing our brain trust, Andy Heath, Andy Sisk, and Janine Windishausen to analyze this information, not just on this five-year scale or next year's budget, but on kind of a longer-term sustainability model, and I would really like to encourage the board to think about giving some direction, that we actually task those three folks and maybe some others with creating a long-term model for ways to approach not just Calpers but OPEB as well. I think the time to take the bull by the horns is now rather than later, and just, it would be my strong feeling that we should really give some direction to staff, that that's something that should happen sooner rather than later.
Great.
The fiscal year 1415 budget development process, some of the things that we're doing. We recently, in the last three weeks, met with all countywide departments, actually sat down with them, had good conversations about their base budget and some of the things that they're submitting, looked at their supplementals, and are now taking that information back and basically massaging it, looking at it from a countywide perspective, and will be ultimately bringing back to the board on June 3 the proposed budget that you will be seeing. But the fiscal year 1415 proposed budget considers the following: we are considering continued modest discretionary revenue growth. Again, we have 2% built in for property tax, 3% built in for sales tax, and then continued receipts of construction permits consistent with current activity, real straight transfer taxes, some of the more discretionary revenues that are received into the General Fund. We also have proposed service delivery models that account for increasing short and long-term cost drivers. Just went through the Calpers model, so we've really got to make an adjustment in our thought process on how we approach even next year's budget, knowing that down the road, we will have an issue that we need to deal with with respect to Calpers costs on the retirement side. We also went through an extensive project where we aligned direct and indirect costing methodologies with the departments to which they belong. We went through, as I mentioned when I talked about the Library, an A-87 overview, where we really went through and looked at A-87 very deeply, to align those costs specifically with where those costs go. We also did a comprehensive review and analysis of the county's internal service funds, and you'll see some different things coming to the board as part of the proposed budget in June for that, and then some of the central services costs as well, where we're looking at charge tables and aligning, more appropriately aligning, the charges with the services that are provided by those central service areas and those departments. The goal here is to align all of the costs associated with the county and how the county provides services to the departments which provide those services, ultimately to the programs within those departments that provide those services. We'll also have expanded capital and infrastructure fiscal information available with the budget document. We have a new team that's been put together that's called the Capital Projects Team that is currently going through the capital facilities financing plan and the capital plan that is in the budget today, and updating that, and hopefully bringing back to the board as part of the proposed budget in June, a more comprehensive document that includes all capital projects and infrastructure projects, on-ramp projects, gives a potential funding source for those projects, looks at them from more of a long-term perspective, and then also informs the board of how much funding is actually available for these projects, both that's tied to the project and is available from other sources. Additional project information will be available on all of the projects that are part of that plan, where we'll have basically a project briefing sheet that will be part of this document. So it will become a more comprehensive capital projects budget that will basically supplement and augment what's in the budget today, which is just a list of projects. And then priority-based budgeting. One of the things that we want to be doing this year is working with departments to inventory their programs and services as we continue the phased process of developing a priority-based budget for the future in the county. We will be asking departments to, actually departments have turned in their inventory of their departmental services and programs, and another team that's been put together, which is called the Priority-Based Budgeting Coordinating Council, will be going through this information, and we will be making a presentation to the board as part of the May 6 meeting. You'll see that in another slide. Looking at some of the things that are on tap that we've received as part of the budget submittals from the departments, you'll see here, these are the supplemental requests, and this represents the, from a fund perspective, the expenditure and revenue supplemental requests that have been received with the net county cost. We have about $16.4 million in net county cost supplemental requests that have been received. Of those requests, $9 million represents net ongoing costs, and $7.4 million represents one-time costs. So we're currently going through all of those supplemental requests, and we'll be working with departments in short order to come to a conclusion on what we will be recommending for those. Some of these supplemental requests include requests to restore and fund positions as the economy continues to improve, and then there's some land development and facilities-related costs that include Placer County Conservation Plan, General Plan Update as it relates to the Climate Action Plan, Tahoe Basin Community Plan, Sunset Industrial Area, several other one-time supplemental requests as well. Spoke about this a little bit already, but essentially what this represents is where we project Calpers retirement costs going through 2021. As you can see, the dash line represents the safety plan, and the blue line represents the miscellaneous plan. Calpers rates are projected to increase by about 50% over the next five or seven years, and again, this represents about $9 million in miscellaneous, General Fund, and $8 million in Public Safety Fund money by 1920. And three things are going into these rates, the most recent of which is the Calpers Experience Study that they adopted, that their board adopted about three weeks ago, where they have changed the methodology by which they calculate actuarial rates associated with people living longer and people retiring earlier. That alone will represent about 8% to 10% of additional Calpers premium that will be added to the rates. And then we also have to factor in the 0% return that Calpers earned on its investment pool in fiscal year 1213, and then we also have the smoothing changes for their investment returns that they've built into the rates already that are already part of our actuary. So you can see that Calpers rates are going to be significant moving forward. I guess this is on a good note. From the state budget perspective, we really don't see a whole lot that the state is going to be doing to local governments this year, counties or cities. The governor's proposed budget has no real significant impacts to local government finances. There's no revenue grabs, no dissolutions being proposed, just status quo for the most part. The governor's plan does set a plan to pay down what is termed the wall of debt that the state has, and this includes deferred payments to schools that haven't been made for some time, prepayment of the economic recovery bonds, unpaid state mandates, which will, according to the plan that they have in place, will be completely paid off by fiscal year 1718, and to the county of Placer, that's about $17 million in unpaid mandates, and then also just repayment of loans to special funds within the state framework itself. State also will be funding a rainy day reserve where they're adding $1.6 billion to that, and that's in addition to an $700 million augmentation to their general fund reserve. And then there's also an allocation for deferred maintenance on certain infrastructure projects of about $815 million to offset the $64.6 billion in deferred infrastructure that they have, so doing something there. This is the budget development process and kind of where we're at right now and what the board can expect in the next several months. On May 6, as I mentioned, we will be doing a presentation of departmental program and services inventory. This is consistent with the transition to the priority-based budgeting concept. We, on June 3, we will be bringing back to the board the 1415 proposed budget and the position allocation ordinance. It's anticipated, and it's been communicated to the departments, that the proposed budget that we're bringing to the board this year will represent as close to the final budget as possible, so that we are not caught up in trying to do two different budgets. So we're spending a lot of time right now, and will be up until June 3, making sure that that proposed budget that we bring to you will represent pretty close to what you're going to find in the final budget when we bring that back on September 9. The only differences between proposed and final will be what we're terming technical adjustments, whether it be some true-ups to fund balance based on certain accruals, or other larger expenditures that we're waiting for certain revenues for that may need some additional time and analysis between June and September to make sure that those can be recommended as part of the budget process before it is finalized. And then again, on June 9, we will have the public hearing and final adoption of the budget for fiscal year 201415. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions you might have.
Sure. Any further questions from the board?
I actually just had a question, and it's actually for David, not for you, Andy. Great job, thank you. You're off the hook. I may be not recalling this correctly, but I thought we had understood that the Resort Association wasn't going to be able to have their board meeting until June 4 for the adoption of that contract. What does that do to our June 3 date?
We'll have a pretty good sense of what our budget figure is, and so if we need to do any fine-tuned, or as Andy called it, kind of true-ups, we'll do that on the September 9 final budget. But at that point, we should have a pretty good handle on how much is available for the Resort Association, and then your board's consideration will be how do they recommend those funds be expanded?
Right, okay, good. Just wanted to make sure that that little bit of a conflict in timing was still in all our brains.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further comment from the board at all on this? Thank you, Andy. Very, very good and timely information, and I would concur with Supervisor Montgomery's earlier comments that we should look to the future on both the OPEB issue and the Calpers matter, for what it's worth. We're going to move now to our eighth item, our county council. We'll turn it over to county council to kind of lay out A and B, our closed session items.
And the board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of new litigation, and for a conference with labor negotiators to discuss negotiations with the employee organization, PPEO.
Testing, one, two. Test, one, two, three, four.